Eighteen hundred hours, the meeting will come to order?
I'm pretty sure it will. A piece of your paper.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
I'm about to hand you a whole ring, Paul Sidney.
Okay.
This one's got line dot, line dot though.
It's yellow.
Yeah, I need it too, the line. Or down.
Okay, we need to approve the agenda?
I'd make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Jane, second by Justin to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Okay.
Okay. Here's where we're starting, take one, pass them around if you would. You will see that the format has changed significantly over what I've given you in the past. It's not my idea. If you like it, fine, if you don't, don't blame me, it's not my idea. There's an extra one. Okay, I thought I printed extras, but... These are your general fund revenues, that's what this entire page is, okay? For the 2016 budget. Our tax valuation is up a little bit, but not very much.
Nancy, for clarification purposes, this is for the budget that starts July 1...
Right, 2015. The July 1, that's five and a half months away. To June 30th of 2016. And they name their budgets after the ending date.
So, and revenue is just...
Income.
Yes, the income that we have to spend for that time period.
Right. Well, the revenue that we have that we think is coming in.
Yeah.
Now, for the purposes of the budget, the revenue needs to be estimated. If we get more revenue than we anticipate, great. If we get less revenue than we anticipate, we need to be paying attention to our budget. However, it doesn't require a budget amendment at any time with the revenues. Only the expenses. When you budget your expenses, you have to tell the public, basically what you're doing is you're telling the public how much money you're going to spend in the next year. And that's the reason for the public hearing before the budget is finalized, is to tell the public and give them the opportunity to comment. So then, once a budget is certified, what you cannot do is spend more money in a given program or fund than what you told the public you were going to spend at the beginning when you certified your budget. Okay? That's the reason for budget amendments, is to give the public that, I mean, we all know that things happen and things have to change from time to time. So the reason for an amendment is to give the public prior knowledge that what you said you were going to spend is going to be different. Okay? Questions? Anyway, our valuations are slightly higher than in the past, but the property tax revenue is just about the same as the year before. It's one of the reasons why this isn't my choice of format, because I can't put that number on here for you, but whatever.
You can't put what number on here?
Past years.
Oh, oh, past years, yeah, okay.
Okay? FICA NIPR's levy is a special revenue. It can only be used to pay the FICA NIPR's of the wages that are paid out of the general fund. Emergency levy is a levy that we can take, it's 27 cents per thousand. If our levy is maxed out at the 810 level, which ours has been forever and forever, we can also levy for the cost of our property and liability insurance. Okay? So those are the extra levies. The tax levy in this budget is $12.63595, okay? Last year's was $12.46489. It's up, what is that, 17 cents? Okay, on a $50,000 home value, a $55,000 taxable valuation, your taxes are going at $8.50 next year. So, I know Justin and I had this conversation about the middle of last year, he called and said, "Why did our taxes go up so much?" And I said, "Justin, Auburn's taxes didn't go up so much. It was the school system and it was other things that levied on top of that." But when the person happened to call the assessor, they blamed the city. Okay? So I want you to be very clear that if your house has a taxable valuation of $50,000, your taxes are going up about $8.50 next year.
For the city's portion.
For the city's portion. Not, "I don't know what the school's doing, I don't know what the county's doing." And we have Iowa Central Community College and everybody else, the taxes, I mean, we're charging $12.64, but I think your taxes are actually about $32,000. Okay? I anticipate from the notice that I got from the state, $22,000 in local option sales tax. And you know that we collect a 5% cable franchise fee every year that amounts to roughly $1,000.
Can I ask how many people are on the cable system any?
I'd have to dig back through the last receipt, it tells me usually...
Is it less than 50%?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. This cable franchise fee used to be $1,200 a year. And will, I think, next year be lucky to make the thousand. People are using the cable, but cable's becoming old technology. And, you know, I got a notice the other day, they're raising it $2 or something.
Yeah, it's pretty lousy.
Old technology that isn't...
It's really programming.
Yeah, it's great programming and then they want to charge more money for it, yeah.
Yeah, it's lousy.
And other than we would, because we get a little bit of a franchise fee out of the deal, we don't really care, because we don't have much other revenue off of that, but that is the story on that.
Do you have any control over the cable?
Yes.
I mean, as far as certain requirements that we want to see, or...
As far as programming?
Yeah.
I don't think so. I don't think there's...
Whoever offers, whatever stuff...
If we knew who was on the cable, we could all...
Does Windstream offer any alternative...
They have a lot more channels on their basic cable.
Yes, but I don't know that they can in the city limits because of this franchise.
And it can.
It's the same as I do, it's just...
Yeah, and Windstream does out in the country, but we don't take advantage of that either. Okay, so we've got... Windstream TV.
Windstream's got, yeah.
Internet, or whatever.
Well, they've got internet, I just wondered if they had television programming as well, that, through their cable system, that like...
I don't think that they're able to sell it within the city limits.
When you talk about a franchise, you're saying the city of Auburn has an agreement with Western Iowa Networks?
Yes.
That we will exclusively use them for the cable.
I think that, I don't know that it says exclusive, but yeah, I think that's it.
I don't think it's exclusive, we've had them for some long.
We renew that every five years, they have to come in and renew it.
But I'm sure if our numbers are doing, yeah, I know if anyone else will come in.
Well, or it could be like, I know another town in the county that used to have a cable, a cable system up there and all the wires are hanging on all the poles, and there's no cable service in that town. They just abandoned it, so we're lucky if they don't abandon it.
Oh.
Yeah.
Most of it is underground, is it? Uh, networks?
Yeah.
I don't know if it is in towns.
There's all the phones overhead and all the cables underground, yeah.
Okay, moving on, licenses and permits. This is our share, the cigarette permits and the beer and liquor licenses is our share of the permits that you guys approve from time to time for anybody that sells cigarettes and beer and liquor in Auburn. Pet licensing, that used to make, take in a whole lot more money, we're licensing a lot less pets, but I think there's a lot less pets in town. Although I think there's a few that we need to get yet too, but... Use of money and property, that's another program function. Park rent, community building rent, which includes the fire station rent, and then whatever possible interest we may or may not get on our checking account. And you can see that's going to add about $2,350 to our general fund. The intergovernmental is not a big section for us, except for it does cover some of this library funding down here. It's any monies that we would receive from another governmental entity. Township reimbursements, when they reimburse the city, that's another governmental entity. I just throw a $500 minimum in there just to put some money in that one. The library is anticipating, and it has not been approved, so we don't really know. The library's anticipating about $15,000 in revenue from the Sack County Supervisors or from Sack County. Sack County Supervisors are very, very good at supporting our libraries in the county. Because of their accreditation, they are anticipating receiving roughly $1,000 in state money. That's open access and a couple other things that are really long to explain to you. Now, the thing about the library's money and the way their budget has always worked with the city council is whatever their revenue is, is also what their expense is in their discretionary money. Okay? So when we get over to the expense side, you're going to see that same $16,000. It's not going to be broke out into the different categories, because that's something Danita and I do after the budget is done. It's a round number at this point.
But it's not money for the city council to access?
Well, yes and no. I mean, you guys have total authority over everything, but if you try to take the library's money, you're going to blow the town up.
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay, got it.
And the law's a little different with libraries, they really, the library boards really do have final say-so with any of their funding that actually comes in for the library. The law's a little different when it comes to library boards. The recreation committee, I've just plugged a number of $4,000 in there, this is out. Also what I would consider a pass-through, because they have their own source of funding. There's no city funding included in this $4,000 amount here, as well as the historical committee. Okay? Those are numbers, those are revenues we anticipate, and you're going to find matching expenses to those revenues when we get to the expense page. Just one number on the bottom here. Now, I guess I'll back up, any of the highlighted ones, they're kind of gray boxes. Those are ones that have a special purpose. Those each have, the FICA NIPR's levy can only be spent for those benefits. The emergency levy can only be spent after council approves a resolution to send it into the general fund. The culture and recreation revenues, those are attached by other boards or committees that they have the say-so over those. Does that make sense to you? Okay, so I'm anticipating for next year, if all goes well, and I have an estimate too high, that a general fund revenue of $116,934.
Okay, so Nancy, does that include that 21.5, or no?
Yes, yes. That does include that 21.5.
Okay, so, and that 21.5 is just the library, rec, and historical?
Yes.
That we really don't budget?
That we really don't, this group really doesn't have a lot to say. I mean, do you approve their bills being paid, yes, but do you get to decide how they spend their money, no?
Right, because in the historical case, that's county, their portion of the county funding, and, yes, same with library.
Right. Now, in the, this is our first page of our expense. Public safety is the first function or department that we have to worry about. And these are, I have these broken out the way they're broken out by the state on their forms. So, public safety, we have fire department, we have that first 60, where it says fire department, $6,600. That is the fire department's request of the city council for their discretionary funding. That's their fuel, their equipment, their physicals, their, whatever they decide they need for their department. Okay, the line item that says fire city is $8,650. That is their insurance, their truck insurance, the building maintenance, whatever else is put into that line item. And animal control is a number that is based on what we pay for the software to print the licenses and some dollars in case we end up picking up a dog, which we got pretty close this fall again. So, public safety budget is $28,275.
And the police contract?
Oh, I skipped police, I'm sorry, yeah. I have not heard from Kenny what his increase is going to be, so I plugged in 3%. Okay, the $12,550 includes a 3% increase over the year before. It may, it may or may not happen, because I haven't heard from him what that's going to be. I was hoping he'd stop and see me this week, can probably stop tomorrow.
No.
No? I said, "Do you know something I don't know?" So that's the public safety budget. Public works is the next one. Because of some, we usually put a number of about $1,500 in for storm sewer out of the general fund. Now, we will maybe take some other storm sewer money out of the road, use tax fund if we needed to. Out of the general fund, we budget $3,000 to take down trees, and I'm not aware of any trees that need to be taken down in the next year. However, Jerry does make us wear that we'll probably have some stumps to grind. The rest of these numbers are operation of the city services. Fuel, repairs of any of the vehicles or equipment, property liability insurance, phone, so we can call him at all hours of the day. Any other, operating supplies is kind of a catch-all for parts and equipment and, you know, pipes and things that he buys that I just don't know where they go. And in the past few years, we've had a larger number under equipment purchase. And I will share with you the equipment list before we get done tonight, but Jerry's not telling us that we have a huge amount of equipment at this point that he needs. But it's also not a smart idea to not put any number in there in case we do need some equipment. So you'll see the public works budget, and that is to take care of our vehicles and everything, I mean, it takes care of our... You know, if he does work at the park, it's going to land in this number, okay, for the most part.
And it's fair to say that this is pretty bare bones. This doesn't have any, this has, this is...
Yeah.
What's bare, bare bones, I would say.
I would say, yeah, it's not excessive, there's no big numbers in there. This is just based historically on what it takes to run that area, okay?
Right.
Now, we could, we could take most of these dollars and shift them into the road use tax fund. However, if you do that, then you have no money for street repairs. Okay? That's the thing about cost shifting, you can cost shift all you want, and I can show you some pretty creative ways to do it, but it never gets you anywhere.
Is the road use tax fund revenue over here, or is that a fund revolving?
The road use tax fund money is on the sheet with the road use tax expenses, so we'll get there.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, so this is just general fund revenue?
This is just general fund revenue, that is what we're talking about, and I'm not going to mix anything else in there at this point. So there's your public works budget, okay? Yes, sir.
What was the total line item?
$16,950, I'm sorry, I've said all the rest of them have a nine.
Thank you.
Health and social services. We have to have mosquito control, and I am budgeting for next year $950. He goes up about 3 to 5% a year, and it was $900 last year, so... Good luck.
He's done really good.
Good luck.
I thought last year was horrible.
Last year it rained every day.
Last year, it was awful weather, yeah.
And they do, what they, we're contracted with them is to spray every two weeks, and they do that. And I get an email that shows me that they've been here, so...
I think just about everybody around, get them an S.A. spray, and they'll say, "Here, I'll try and..."
See, and the dirty little secret is, if we wanted to buy the equipment and do the mosquito spraying ourselves, it's a huge licensing mess.
Oh, yeah.
It's a huge liability mess.
Chemical application, yeah.
And so, it's not something we can afford to do for $950 a year. Now, maybe we want to talk to mosquito control about coming more often. Maybe you want to pay them more money and have them come more often.
I just saw some places use the planes, and they seem to be a lot more effective.
They use the plane when the weather's fit.
Yeah.
Okay?
What's the name of the...
I know, I've heard of this.
Mosquito Control Vial.
One time last year, the plane. I seen it.
So they're not someone who...
And scared of being...
They're based on a roll. And I would say they easily do 25% of the state.
Yeah, they do a lot of them.
Yeah. Okay, moving on, the next program part of the budget is the culture and recreation budget, and there's another whole page to this budget, okay? What you have in front of you is strictly the library budget. Now, the library was in the other night, and if you remember, they asked you for $2,500 in discretionary spending. They asked you to support their 10, their increased 10 hours of wages, okay? I estimate that to be roughly $6,000 for next year, even though Danita's not going to get a raise, or she's asked not to get one. And the other thing in this budget is, they also asked you to pick up the difference in their renovation project at $2,500. Okay? I think that renovation project, Jane, is going to be done before this budget starts, right?
Yeah, right. I will do my best.
So that $2,500 may occur in this year's budget, if that's something you want to approve. Now, I put all those numbers in here for all of the entities that ask you for money, the way they asked you for them. What you guys need to give me tonight before we go home is your direction, is that something you want to support? I don't want to say anything bad, I think the 30 hours has been wonderful for our library, I think it's been wonderful for our community. However, if, I will remind you that last year, when you guys approved that 10 hours, you said, "We will do it for one year, and you guys have to find a way to sustain it for next year." That hasn't happened.
Did we say you have to find a way, or did we say it was one-time money? And that we wanted them to do their fundraising and to make every effort? I did, did we make it that contingent, that black and white, Nancy, I don't remember?
I, I believe we did, but...
I think that was, what was exactly said, I'm not positive, but I think it was council's intention that you were going to do it one year.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's, and here we are, back a year later, you can make, you can make a different decision. You can make the same decision, you know, but before we go home tonight, you need to give me that direction. You know, we need to talk about that. If you want to stop and talk about it now, we can stop and talk about it now.
But the library, though, that best 3466, that's required support that we...
The Iowa code says that for every $1,000 evaluation that we have within the city, we have to put 67 and a half cents towards supportive of a library. Now, that doesn't mean we have to have a library. If we were to say, "We're not going to have a library in all of our residents, we want them to go to Carroll," then we'd send a check to Carroll every year as our supportive library. Okay? But we do, our required support is $3,466. So we're doing, and you'll notice down below, their discretionary spending in the $16,000 I noted in revenue for a total library budget of $32,300.
And they ask for $6,000, right, approximately, from the council?
No.
No.
No, they asked for $11,000.
$11. See, they asked for the 10, she's estimating the 10 hours at $6,000. The building maintenance difference, or, excuse me, the, what she calls the discretionary is their programming.
Yep, that they get to spend however they want.
People who come in and... And that required support is just there for comparison purposes?
Yeah.
It doesn't, yeah, I know.
I just want you to know what you have, and, you know, they asked for $11,000 on top of a place to have it, all of their insurance, all of their utilities, their phone, all of those things, okay? So if you look at the $16,300 number, that used to be $5,300, okay? Yeah. Now, the other thing I want you to notice, the highlighted things on this page, fire department, police, mosquito control, and this 3466 library, those are the things the Iowa code says you have to pay for with your general fund money. Okay? Those are, anything that's not in a gray box, you guys can make a decision about. Any questions on the library, do you want to stop and talk about that for a minute? Do you want to look at the rest of the general fund before we do? Do you want me to get to the end of my presentation before we do?
Let's go to the end of the general fund, that's okay, I'm ready.
This is never a fun meeting, because we always have more wants than we have money. I mean, that's just the way that is.
Oops, I didn't mean to throw that.
These don't come apart. This is the other half of the culture and recreation budget. That one program in the state finance setup, okay? Parks, there's one number in here that is here because it's a holdover from this present year. The buildings one at the bottom of the parks column, in 9,500. Remember a year ago, we talked about moving that gazebo over here at the park, up to the balding? We've done nothing about it, we've done nothing about it at this point. I don't see us doing it this spring. If I were going to get put in charge of this, we would get the bids and apply for an endowment foundation grant and do it in this budget year. That's why that number is here. If you want to take it out, if you want to forget the project, you can, we can do that. But then, we won't need that entire, as far as expenditures, if we get an endowment foundation grant, we don't need that entire amount.
And here's where I'm at on that gazebo, and whatever you guys think. You know, I look at that $9,500, and I know that would be a matching for an endowment grant, but if we're going to use, if we're going to set aside $9,500, let's put it, in my opinion, over the library.
Well, before you go down that road, we're not setting aside, if we apply for an endowment foundation grant, we are not setting aside $9,500.
Okay.
We would apply for half of that. However, in our budget, the entire amount has to be in the budget, no matter where the funds come from.
Okay, so even in half of that?
Yeah.
You know, to move that gazebo that has some structural problems?
I just don't think it's going to live.
Yeah, if we...
Move, the move, I mean, I've looked at it, and I just, I'm no professional, but it just, it looks rough. I don't know if it'll survive a move.
And maybe Randy's idea, if we, you know, if we do want to do something like that, maybe build something, write the grant and see if we could put something up there. Unless there's a reason why that gazebo is...
It has no sentimental value to the city, does it?
Not that I know of.
Well, didn't they move it off of one of its parts? I mean, it's been around a while.
Those kids that sat there waiting for the bus and need something too.
Maybe...
I don't know.
Sorry, I have that around for you. I just wanted to add that, that's my opinion on that particular line item. I just think it's not, in all the needs that we have, and all the wants that we have, that's not a high priority at all for me.
Okay. Community building, that's pared down about as low as we can go. There is some money in there for maintenance and repair.
Did you have a question, Curtis?
Oh, what was the line item for culture and rec, non-library?
We haven't gotten there yet.
I'm sorry, okay, thank you.
We're not quite there yet. For parks, including that, moving that gazebo was $18,450. Community building, you'll see the maintenance and repair number is a little larger than sometimes, but we have a very aging boiler that I'm not sure will limp, I don't know how long we'll limp this through. We're continuing to limp it through, we're going to have a couple thousand dollars worth of work done on it tomorrow or Wednesday, and... So just put that in the back of your mind, that there may come a day. And then, this budget is just completely shot.
That last time that we had all those problems down there, did Drees give us an estimate of what it was to replace at that time? I don't remember.
Yeah, and it was $30,000 or $40,000, something ugly, I don't remember exactly what it was. And it, something about the way the piping's configured down there, that they both have to be replaced. Now, that was their information. Now, we've had Drees back here this last two weeks. The boiler hasn't worked right for almost three weeks. We're having to go down and manually start the one for the library several times a day. Yeah. And MGM was the one who got it running. The last time when Drees says it has to be replaced, MGM comes down and gets it running. We call MGM this time, and they're going, "We can't get parts for this old thing." Called Drees. So Drees is back at it, they're going to do the work tomorrow or Wednesday. Different guy, this guy hasn't said, "You got to replace it." But I think we're just that close. Maybe we can limp it a year, maybe two, maybe five, who knows? But...
Did Jerry meet with them today? Was that, did he come up today? I thought I said, anyway, according to Jerry, this morning, he said, and this backs up what Nancy said, is that Drees are the only outlet for the supplies, the necessary equipment, I guess, or whatever you want, replacement parts. And their estimated cost for labor, their supplies is...
About $1,000?
$1,000, that's it, but $4,100 to $4,700 for the labor.
For just fixing it up this time?
Yes. Okay, do I have that wrong? I thought that's what he said.
No, I thought he said the- I thought he told me the labor was gonna be about the same as the parks.
Okay, well, then-
So, I don't know. And he's been talking to her.
2,000 versus 6,000.
It's a big difference.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we're between our a and our place.
Yeah, well, we were all in the same room, so if I missed-
And I haven't talked to the company Jerry has, so- I didn't hear what he said today. I think I was on the phone or something.
Oh, could be.
And I didn't hear what he said this morning. I just know what he told me the other day was-
Okay, but Bernie, you were there. Did you- did you hear him say 4,700 or 4,100, something like that?
I heard- I heard that number, but-
Okay, well, I wanna hold it up. Anyway, my- my impression of what Jerry said this morning was that they thought that would fix it, at least for the foreseeable future.
Yeah, until something else goes wrong.
Yeah.
You know, and but, you know, and here's the other thing. How many $6,000 repairs can you put in before it's smarter to replace the stupid?
Right, right.
You know? I don't know. So, there's your community building at 8,600. Recreation committee is just, um, the 4,000 is just their income. We do pay for the recreation committee, their library liability, property, and just a very small amount of maintenance. We haven't put any amount of maintenance up there for a long time, but I do leave a little bit up there in case there's something has to be done. Historical, again, there's a number in here for an expense, but they spend their own funds. And again, they've asked for you to do this and we have continued to do this for the past several years. Their liability, property, utilities, and a small amount of maintenance on their building. Recreation 4,775 and the historical 7175. The entire culture and recreation budget is $70,760.
Right, but Nancy, you've got stuff in there. I mean, which I understand why you're listing it, but like Santa, or is that donation?
No, that's just one number. It doesn't need to be there. That's recreation's money. That's coming out of their own funds. That's- I put 4,000 in their revenue. I put 4,000 in their expense.
Right.
Okay?
But when you come up with 70,760, it looks like we've- the city itself is- is putting that money in there.
Well, that's why I've told you that differently. You have to keep that in your mind because I- it has to go in the budget because we have to spend it.
Right, I understand that.
One more page for the general fund.
To give up? Don't pass it down here.
Where does the, uh, like utilities and things for the shop fall?
That is actually in the electric fund. Because we- we track, we read those meters, Justin, but because we're on the cash system, there's no money that trades hands.
Right, right.
So, it's a number outside of the budget, okay? The shop actually runs about $40 a month, period, year-round. Some months less than that, so-
But this building between everybody is at 3,900. Is that including LPs?
That is LP that we would be purchasing, okay?
In the utilities?
In the utilities.
But that's not the electric either?
No, that is not the electric for anything. Yeah, yeah. It costs about $4,000 a year to heat this building. And it's had years where it was worse.
Do you have estimates on what the electric use is between, like here? Or is that all in the electric too? Is it all lumped together on the building?
It's all in the utility billing system because we- I mean, we read each meter for each building. This- this building runs about $140 a month, average year-round. It used to be 180 until we moved the old folks down to the fire station. Now, the fire station's higher and this one's lower. But with the library here, 10 hours a week more, you know, we're heating the building more hours. We're- there's someone in the building more hours a day. Lot of days, there's someone in the building 11 hours a day.
So, on the public safety part under Fire City, does that include their utilities and stuff?
No.
The 8650?
No.
That's not their utilities down there either?
No, and their utilities run about, without looking it up, about 6,000 or 7,000 a year.
Will that all be on that electrical report?
No, because it's not a cash item, okay? We track it. We know and we- what I do is I bill those- I bill those utilities or those meters like I would you, okay? I print a bill and then we just- I go into the utility system and write that off. I know what it is every month and we account for it every month. But it's- it's just a loss to the electric fund. It's just uncollectible sales.
So, more or less it's- we more or less build it into what we charge the customer?
We need to, yeah.
But it's not currently calculated into that?
Yeah, it is, but when we get to the electric fund, I'm gonna show you where we're getting in trouble, okay? And those dollars aren't even included. Anything else before I move on? Community and economic development, um, these numbers are numbers we don't typically spend, but they need to be there. We had to buy mulch last year. We- if we sell that lot we talked about the other night, that $2,500 or 3,000 or whatever may come from the economic development line item. They're just little things. The hometown pride money that we're gonna have to pay will come from the economic development. Have you gotten a notice about that yet?
Twenty-nine.
Okay, all right. Just little things pop in my head. So, those numbers, we typically don't spend, but, you know, when you have a deficit like we're getting to at the end of this page, you've gotta have a few numbers in there that you don't plan to spend or you're in big trouble.
Was it last year that we had the Big Rose expense?
Yes, yes, okay?
What was that again?
About $950. I'm hoping that we don't have to buy mulch this year. We had just a little bit left over and-
Does wages for the greenskeeper come out of this?
That's in the parks budget.
It's in parks.
Yeah. And you guys aren't all aware of this, but when we- when the council too elected to do the Streetscape project, they had to make a commitment to keep up with it. And that's that $2,500 beautification budget. That's for things like that. That's where we put part of that money, okay? And then there's general government. There's all the things that we spend money on. The highlighted ones are ones you have no choice about. Liability insurance, bond insurance, the annual audit fee. You- state losses, you have to pay a city clerk.
So, when you- when you say that, Nancy, the finance administration, you've just set aside part of your salary there? Is that what that is or?
We currently take 35% of my salary comes out of the general fund, okay? 50% of my salary's in the electric fund and 10%, the other 15%, I guess is the math, comes out of the water fund. But here again, it used to be much more of my salary was in the general fund, much less of it was in the electric fund. So, we cost shifted over because we wanted to do more things like libraries and, you know, things like that. Total- total for general government is 42,300 and I will tell you that I pared some of those numbers back. Some, um, we have to pay for an election in this budget year, so there's an increase right there. That $1,500 was not in last year's budget. You know, do we always spend that much money on legal fees? No. But have we? Yes. So, total general fund expenditures, here's the fun number, $164,235. If I remind you, you have $116,934-
Wow.
-of anticipated revenue, with the shortfall in the general fund of $47,846. Now, I will tell you that that number is not unusual for Auburn. That's a normal number for Auburn. It's maybe a little higher than normal, but it's not all that far off. But I have pared down a lot of other things and with these sheets, you can't see what I've done there. And I don't have my notes in front of me, so I can't tell you exactly what we pared down, but we have pared a lot of things down where we- we've got some things asking for a lot of money that you have to decide if those are supportable.
I have a question back in general government. We have meeting and conferences, $1,000, and then meeting and conferences, a little bit lower, 650.
That's for mayor and council.
What's for what?
Mayor and council. The 650 is all the league meetings and all the things you guys go to that the city reimburses you for.
So, that's the Sack County League meetings and any mileage that we claim from the city-
Yes.
To the town?
Yes.
And then the other is?
Is what it would cost to send me to meetings on your behalf, training, any other things that I might have to go to. The training is basically the- the cost of any seminars I may take, but the meetings and conferences would be travel. And I- I haven't used that much of that budget in a long time, but-
And that's you, only not Jerry's?
That's right.
So, this banking mileage and fees on your general government includes your day-to-day mileage? And fees are fees for-
Well, we have- we pay fees for our automatic clearinghouse transfers. The rest of that would be to- for me to drive to the bank when I need to. And I have really have that less down- less than once a week like this in the most recent months. I try not to, but-
What was the clearinghouse fee that's-
Runs about $13 a month, but that goes in that- in that line item, yeah. When- if- if you have your account set up to be automatically taken out of your checking account, okay?
Yeah, they take a percentage.
Yeah, yeah, we have to pay to- it's actually cheaper and I'll get it. I think it's like $2.50 per time and then so much a transaction like a dime or something. And I would be lost if I didn't.
What does association dues all cover? Is that the-
Mine? Um, I have to belong to the IMFOA, Iowa Municipal Finance Officers, which is my state certification. That's $40.
For this job?
Yes. Well, yeah, it's pretty required because I can't get- be state certified without belonging. And by the way, I looked at my certificate today and it expires next week, so I've gotta recertify. Um, and my $10 dues to the West Central Clerks Association. And those are both training opportunities and we'll go through some of that later on too before we get done. Those are the sources of my training and, yeah, you gotta pay dues. What they do to you, Jane, is if you don't pay dues to IMFOA, then when I go to the conference, it costs a whole lot more.
Yeah, no, I'm sure that's true. So, this association dues is all yours? That doesn't include Jerry's or?
No, the- which one are you looking at? The one under- above for $50 is me.
350 is you.
No, the 50 is me.
The Ibers?
The association dues.
The association dues, right under the gray boxes, is me, the $50.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And the association dues for 350 is the city's mayor and council's dues to the Iowa League of Cities.
Okay.
Okay, which is another-
So, that's just to one place?
Well, yeah, and there- I think that's the only one we pay and that number's a little high, but-
That's one I was looking at. It says 350.
Okay, and you- you guys all know the benefit of belonging to the Iowa League of Cities, okay? It- it's just like we pay dues in the water fund to the Iowa Association of Municipal Utilities. They're just beneficial things, but you have to support those- those entities so that you can belong to them and use their services when you need them.
Is that- does that run pretty true to fact the office supplies, Nancy, the 3,500 for that?
I usually don't spend that much. I think- I think last year I spent closer to 2,000, but there are years where- And this one is a little higher because I put in some money. I still haven't bought that copier. I told you guys I was gonna buy a year ago. So, there's a little bit more in there and I- this computer's working fine now, but I- I left those dollars in that budget because I'm not positive where our office supply, office equipment stuff is at right now.
What's the difference between office supplies and equipment?
Office supplies is paper and binders and all the stuff you need to run the office, but if you're gonna buy more equipment than what we budgeted, the rest of it would go into office supplies.
Equipment, I mean?
Yeah.
Like a copier or?
Yeah, and the copiers I started looking at are gonna be more expensive than I anticipated. And this one keeps working, we're gonna leave it alone. I want- what I really wanted to do was replace this one because it's showing a lot of wear and put it in the library for the library to use, and they don't think they want it. So, we'll wait till it quits. And I don't know why they don't want it because we pay all the expense for it. It's the city's old one that's in there that's broken and barely works. And we buy all the toner cartridges. We buy the paper. It's like, why don't you want it? So, whatever.
Do they use a lot of- so, like, the office supplies that we buy also furnish the library? Do they use a lot of the money?
No, no, and she'll- Danita does buy some of her own paper, okay? They have a printer connected to their computers. They would buy their own toner cartridge for that. But the other, no, and she doesn't use a lot. She does charge people for copies if they come in, but it doesn't amount to much either on a yearly basis. But I'm telling you, it was a great thing to put that copier in there and make it available for people, so I didn't have to make them all.
And telecommunications is the phone system and-
Internet.
And the two cell phones?
Uh, no, cellphone is- is in the shop budget. We only have one cellphone, Jerry's. If you call me on my cellphone, you're calling me on my personal phone and you're not reimbursing me for that.
I did not know that.
Yeah, yeah. And Jerry's on a really old, really cheap plan that is still under $45 a month. Yeah. So, we're getting by good there, but that one could change.
What's a cellphone?
You lost yours. How would you know?
Hey, really?
Yeah, just got a brand-new one. Okay, anything else in the- you've asked lots of questions. You ready to-
Let's go to the next.
Okay. As promised, here's the road use tax. I got this all done today and started printing it out and went, "Where's my road use tax?" I skipped it. I had to go back and do it. It's like, okay. Road use tax is fairly simple because this is money that comes in from the state and it's based on licensing and a little bit on gas tax and whatever else, fees that they charge for use of the road. They are giving us an estimate this year for this budget year of 95- $99.50 per capita. So, we calculate that out to 32,000 for the next year. We do take 30% of Jerry's wages come from the road use tax fund at this point with the accompanying employee taxes. The city's share of those is also levied for, okay? We're allowed to levy for the road use taxes. We can't rep- road use tax benefits. We cannot levy for our enterprise funds, which are water, sewer, electric, and garbage, okay? In this is a small amount for- for storm sewer. I did include 15,000 in this budget for street repairs. Don't know if that's what you're gonna do or not. That doesn't have to be made tonight, that decision.
Nancy, can you take it back up just a second? Just clarify for me. The road use tax is a special fund, a special source of income that can only be used for certain things.
Right.
Okay?
Right.
And those things basically constitute anyone who works on roads or roads related, correct, within the city? Does that-
Roads adjacent, okay? Storm sewer that drains the road, okay? Wages, Jerry's wages- Wages, Jerry's wages, we take that much, because he does snow removal. That's basically what, we pay him for snow removal, keeping the street signs up, keeping the road drained, that kind of thing, you know?
Okay, that's how it gets...
And that's really based on how, and that's a really old percentage, but that's based on about how he spends his time. Thirty percent streets, thirty percent water, twenty-five percent sewer, and fifteen, or ten percent electric is where Jerry's are at. Thirty percent road and water.
Water is separate, and then, what'd you say?
Fif, twenty-five percent sewer. Okay? And the remaining ten percent is electric. That's how his are divided out. Okay? Now, I do put a small amount of wages in here for snow, but that's just if we have to pay someone in addition to Jerry. We haven't used any of that for a long time. And there is just, the other thing we have not done is any of our equipment. We could be taking part of our shop expenses out of this, we could be taking a portion of our equipment expenses. When we bought the skid loader, if it was intended to be used on the street, we could have used road use tax funds, okay? We chose not to, because we know that we have a lot of street repairs that need to be done in the next few years. We're way behind on that, and so we haven't taken, we haven't cost shifted some of those general funds over to the road use tax fund. Now, I'm not saying you can't do that, you can.
Did you, this morning, Nancy and Bertie and I met and just talked? And Jerry gave a great update on what he thought the condition of public works was. And his, didn't you get the feeling from Jerry that he didn't feel like there was a lot of road repair? In the future, in the next twelve months?
Not a lot of immediate, okay? We know that we've got a lot of gator streets that we have to deal with. We've got a lot of cracks that we need to deal with. First Street is probably the most, the worst one that we have. And, you know, we had that survey done a few years ago, and nothing's really changed since then. Although Jerry is really, I think he led us to believe he's really happy with the work that the pavement doctor has done for us. That injection patching that he's done has helped a lot. They, having worked on First Street last summer, and it really got us through another year. But that isn't going to last forever. We really do need to start finding a way to bank some funds in the road use tax fund. You know, what you spend for this year, what you don't spend for this year, you know? And you can, we can put some money in here, and you can decide at a later date what you're going to spend in the next budget year. Maybe you decide not to spend any, but it's, as far as the budget's concerned, it's no harm, no foul, you know? It's in the budget in case you decide you want to.
It was just, he was suggesting five thousand dollars max for the pavement doctor. He said, well, he thought they did a great job. There's just a few more things to do. He didn't think there was ten thousand dollars more to do.
For that process, now?
Yes, now this could involve...
We went on to our discussion, and, you know, to do anything more permanent, we need to do some seal coating. Or we need to do some really expensive milling and laying it back down.
Yes.
Which gets even more expensive. First Street is probably going to require a complete tear out, and that should probably go back with four or six inches of concrete for the use on that street.
Eight inches?
Yeah.
Four inches would be enough. Six, I would think would be barely enough.
Yeah, I think you're probably right.
I know when they redid like the Carnivin Road, they put ten inches of concrete out there.
And I think that's probably what we need.
From the curve to Carnivin, so I mean, that's a lot of concrete.
Probably that's much out there.
It won't last for a long time.
It will, it'll last.
They're hoping to, I mean, it'd double your expense, but you're also hopefully tripling your life.
Yeah. And I, but I think with the...
There's a theory behind that.
You know, as long as a concrete plant and the feed stores here, I don't think we have much choice but to finally take that up and really do it at some point. Where do we get the money? At some point, we're going to borrow some money and issue a bond. It's just all there is to it. It's just a matter of when do we need to really pull the trigger on that? And what can we do in the meantime to keep things, you know? We're barely holding them together is really, I guess, kind of what we're doing. But you can see, we've got thirty-two thousand dollars a year to do it with, you know? So, any more questions on?
Do you remember back when we had that survey? What was our cost estimate per block? Do you remember, it was like twenty-six thousand for the, was it twenty-six thousand per block?
I was thinking that was closer to thirty.
Was it?
I could be wrong, yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, I think that's about right. It was like three million dollars to do everything we needed to do. It's like, yeah, okay. At thirty-two thousand a year, a hundred years later, we'll be done.
But you're right, it's like the electrical system. We've got to do with what we've got and try to make it work until we can get to a point where we're ready to pull the trigger on something bigger.
But be planning for?
We've got to start setting aside money. But it's going to take forever.
Well, and, so here's the thing...
We're way too behind that you know.
Yeah, we are.
Yeah, and so here's the, here's the thing. The dilemma that you're in is you need to set aside money. You need to do that, okay? But where are your revenue streams? They're not in the general fund, they're not in the road use tax fund. So you, I mean, it's a hard decision to make. And, but I think when we go home tonight, you guys are going to have a little better understanding, I hope. Anything more on road before we go on to water?
So are these the only two non-utility-related revenue streams? The road use and the general fund?
And all those different revenue streams in the general fund.
Yeah.
But, but remember, general fund revenues can only be spent for the general fund, okay?
Right.
And road use tax funds can only be used for things that you deem go into the road use.
Road-related.
Yeah. You cannot spend general funds to support your water fund, okay? You can use water funds to support your general fund.
Water fund profits or?
Yeah, yeah.
Margins.
Electric, garbage, sewer, any of those enterprises, because those should be run as a business. Those are a business, okay? And so those business funds you can use to supplement your other. Okay? Here's your water fund. Water sales are actually down this year. I think everybody figured out that their meters are correct and they're conserving.
I suppose I'll have to get my granddaughter here for a month.
That's, yep, get them out here, Bertie. Get them out here.
Didn't we have a big increase in water sales first?
Initial?
Yes, yes. Now, after that first year, they've kind of leveled a little bit. Is it just the year it rained all summer, so nobody watered much? You know, so those are water that we...
And the concrete plant didn't increase?
He increased a lot, our residents decreased. Yeah. Yeah.
There goes what, three, four thousand dollars?
There you go, well?
See, we didn't have to fill, we only pumped it down so far, and then we filled it. So we never, but still.
Yeah. And the same thing here, we take, I've already told you what percentage of Jerry's and my wages come out of the water fund.
Because I'm looking at this, give me that again, yours, what's percentage on?
Ten of mine.
Ten percent, Nancy.
And thirty percent Jerry.
I wrote down somewhere. I just needed...
And I actually sit down, when I figure the FICA and the Ipers, I actually sit down and calculate it down that far, so that only those numbers go in this fund, okay? There's no big deals in here. I've only got five thousand dollars, eight thousand total for maintenance and repair, which will be, will be just happier in heck if that happens. Property and liability insurance, sales tax is just basically a pass-through. That fifty-two fifty is included in the water sales number, but we do have to pay it. Our tower contract will be about eight thousand next year, just under. I did increase the chemicals, salt and chlorine line item, because that has become more historical, that this is the number we're going to use. It's more realistic. In fact, we're about eight thousand this year already. We're going to really hope Jerry doesn't need a, a load of, load of salt before the end of the year. And of course, that loan payment of thirteen thousand three twenty-five to the electric fund for the water meters.
How many years you left on that?
I think this is the last one. I have to look, Justin, but I'm pretty sure this is the last one. We set that one up, I thought we did, for three.
I think you're right.
Yeah, so I'm sure this is the last one. Questions, concerns?
Well, it would be pretty good if we didn't have a payment. Or, not pretty good, but decent.
It would, for the first time, have some, yeah. And I, we'll get there in a minute, I've got some, we're going to look at our fund balance projections before we get all done, too, so you can see. This is just a snapshot of what I anticipate for next year.
And on the water with the meters, we've certainly reduced or been able to trace any lost water. Water that...
Yeah, I think so.
We're attempting to do that anyway.
At least, at least we're sure that what's going to the homes is getting accounted for. Now, you know, there's some, we don't meter what Jerry uses to flush, so we don't know what that number exactly is.
We don't know what the fire trucks take either.
We don't know what the fire trucks take. We don't, you know, we don't know that number. You know, we sell the bulk water, but do I ever compare that back to, no. Okay, this is the sewer. And you will be happy to notice, when you get down into the expenses, there's a zero where it says loan payment. In June, the sewer fund will make the final payment to the electric fund, and we will be completely out of debt in the sewer fund.
We didn't take any of that meter cost and put it on to the sewer?
We did not, yeah, we did not.
Good.
Now, we might have done some of the, like the reader and the software, I think I put some of that in the sewer. As, just as an expense, not as part of the loan, okay?
So Nancy, twenty-five percent of Jerry's wages go against the sewer?
Yep.
And how much of yours?
Zero.
Zero, zero, Nancy.
So, yes.
Back to the water, you said on that loan payment, on the water fund, that was the last year, this is the last year for that?
Next year's budget will be the last year's, yeah. Next year's budget. This, the year that we're currently in, and the next budget, and then that will be paid back.
When does that actually transfer? When does that actually take place? Is there a specific date?
When I get around to doing it? Or before the thirtieth of June?
Okay.
A couple of years I've done it in April, I think I've done it in June most years. Sometimes I've done it a little earlier, because we're getting really short on our budget. And I want you guys to see how short we are on our budget, so I go ahead and make that transfer, so you can see that things are really tight, but... Okay? So for the first time since I've been here, I'm projecting a, not a deficit in the sewer fund. We're talking eleven and a half years. Now, that, you know, keep your fingers crossed, don't anticipate it, but keep your fingers crossed that the DNR doesn't come in and say, guess what, we're going to, you need to do it, you need to do it, you need to do.
They do that to a lot of people, aren't they?
They are, but, but the wizards are smart, when they built our lagoon, put in a three-cell lagoon. And most of the ones that have had trouble, put in a two-cell back in that day. And what they had to do is increase to a three-cell, most of them, not all of them, but...
Well, someone had to drain theirs and then re-dig them out. That was a big...
Wrap them, drain them and wrap them, and then dig them out, yeah.
I asked Jerry, when he was here, about whether, you know, the banks, if there were any eroding going on or whatever. He said, no, it looks really good down there, so, as far as its physical layout, so that was good news.
And they haven't noted weed growth on the banks, or, I've seen the reports from another city, and they'll note cattail growth. Things like that, and that gets you in trouble kind of fast. Makes you buy a thousand dollars' worth of fish.
Oh. Okay, Nancy, you're, how much of your wages come out of the?
Fifty percent.
Fifty percent, Nancy and Jerry?
Is...
Ten?
Ten, ten.
Ten.
Yeah, ten, sorry. This one, the electric fund this year was a really challenge to estimate, because what we don't know is exactly what our bills are going to look like from heart. I have a little hope, because I was sent a filing that Mid-American had to make to FERC on our behalf for the substation. We've been paying seventeen hundred dollars a month on the substation. The FERC filing said that our cost on that substation was under eight hundred. So we'll see if that gets passed through to us, if we're going to be able to tell whether it's passed through to us in that way. I don't know. I won't see another bill, I won't see the first bill till about another two weeks yet. So I don't know what it, I don't know what it's going to look like, I don't know any of that. So, and you know, in our projections, we were said, here's where we are, this is going to, our bills are going to go to here for a while and then go back up. Well, for the purpose of a budget, it's really hard to say, here's what our revenue is going to be, because our dollars are going to, if our rates go down, our dollars go down. And so it's really hard for me, I took my best guess, and this budget could be, for that reason alone, way out of whack. As far as revenues and, and the dollar, the wholesale power cost number. And I did reduce that some over what I had had in last year's budget. But I really don't know, I haven't even seen the first bill, so...
But you made us aware of those kind of moving objects, and so, yeah.
Yeah, this one's, this one's a struggle. And another note, and this is true with all of our utilities, where it says utility deposit, there's a revenue number there, and if you go clear to the bottom, there's a matching expense number, that's strictly a pass-through. We have to take that money in, we hold it until the customer gets it back, and we pay it out. So it's kind of an estimate, it's fairly close most years, but it's a pass-through. It's a, it's a negative revenue, negative expense kind of thing, okay? And you'll see the water loan proceeds in our revenue, and projecting revenue, and this is kind of a shot in the dark, but two-hundred-and-forty-two thousand, five-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars.
So the water will just pay back?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. For this year, it's a revenue, it's an expense to the water fund, a revenue to the electric fund, and then it goes away. It will be gone.
And the poll rent is what?
Jerry mentioned to you this morning, yes. Windstream has an attachment agreement with us. They pay us seven dollars per poll, and we have a hundred, and we bill them for a hundred and one polls. And that could be seven oh seven, but I like round numbers, so... Okay?
And association dues there are for?
IEMU, Midwest Municipal Transmission Group.
Are we ever cashed out of that?
No, we're in that.
Is that the wind?
No, that's not the wind. That is our transmission investments, that's the group that owns those investments, okay?
That we had ten thousand, or what did we, what did Auburn originally put in there?
Fifteen?
In the transmission, I think that's pretty close.
Right, right, that long.
Yeah, and it was, it's two different investments. One was, I think one was ten, and the other one was like four or five, or, yeah, okay? Those, those are not paying us back yet, but I do keep a line and item in there for the transmission investment. That's, it's coming. We're getting really close to the time where those are going to start paying us back.
Paying us back like what we have in it?
Our investment, see, here's the thing, when we invested in the transmission, these were lines that Mid-American built, okay? But we, MMTG, Midwest Municipal Transmission, went to court with the, with the feds and said, we want an opportunity to be able to participate in building transmission, because all that transmission coming across Mid-American lines cost us money. We had to pay for that transmission. But they had everything tied up, so cities couldn't build transmission, okay? So they went... So they went to court, got permission, got a judgment that said, "You can participate in building these transmission lines," okay? So we have two projects, one is Quad Cities West and the other one is Grimes Granger. The Quad Cities West one is the large one, it was a transmission line built over in the Quad Cities, okay? With that agreement with Mid-American, we get a certain revenue amount for everything that goes across that transmission line, okay? But we had to pony up huge amounts of money to be, to build it, okay? We paid Mid-American to build it. So, and we bonded, that group bonded all those monies. We, we put in a percentage of cash, but we didn't put in near as much cash as what it cost, okay? The Grimes Granger one was the smaller four or five thousand dollar one, that is, we watched them build it. If you went to Des Moines on one forty-one, four or five years ago, you watched them build that transmission line. And that's the one we own part of.
And so the repayment process is, is what, are the reading...
Basically, the money that's come across that, up to now, is paying for...
Yeah, the income off of that transmission is paying, first paying off the, the interest and the bonds, and eventually starts paying us back. When we're getting enough revenue off of it to pay the bonds and have revenue, we'll start seeing a check, and we're getting close. One of the things I'll talk to you about, and I'm gonna jump around, is the Iowa Public Power Association. When I show you later my boards and affiliations, I sit on the board of the Iowa Public Power Association. That is the board that borrowed the money on the, on behalf of MMTG. That is who we sent our check to, okay? That is who we will get our money from. So, if you're questioning my time on that board, I think my time on that board's very well justified, 'cause they've got our money. So, that, I'll, that's my little soapbox, but, yeah.
So, the fifteen thousand dollars that we've spent, when do you, when are we estimating that we...
I have to go dig that all out, and it will be so small in the first years, I'd have to go dig it out, I...
I wanna say, when I was proposing, it was like a six or eight-year payback.
Before we would get paid.
Before we started saying paybacks.
Yeah. And I...
And then once we see paybacks, we're talking...
Then it's gonna be a progressive increase.
Eventually, it'll be an income to our, to our, our fund, it'll eventually be an income. And I, I don't, I can't remember, I think it's like a, an annual income at the out-end, because I think they were, I think they bonded to, it was a forty-year bond, they bonded to pay it back in twenty years, and the life of the thing was forty years, so the last twenty years, we got all, our share of all the revenue. So, I mean, it's a good thing if you had, and at the time, the council had some money to invest in the future, and it just hasn't, we haven't, this group hasn't seen the reward of that yet, but it's coming. But I, I'd have to go back and dig all those back ends out.
That all kinda wrapped up in the fact that we had to invest in the green energies, that was all kinda came down the federal pipeline at the same time, I remember.
Yeah, we talked about a lot of stuff at that point.
We had a lot of meetings over that.
Yeah. And that, it was right after that, the IEM wind stuff was kinda born as well. And we all went to, I think you went with us that night down to Breida to that meeting, didn't you?
Yeah.
And we learned about that, and so, yeah.
So how much of the association dues is IEMU and how does that break out?
I'd have to go and look, I don't, I can't answer that. I think that IEMU dues are about three hundred a year, and, no, they're more than that, they're eight hundred a year. Just a minute.
And then this other thousand is for this...
MMTG.
IEMU and MMTG.
IEMU don't have them, that broke down, yeah, I got them all, I thought she...
I thought there was some talk about actually cashing out of that group, wasn't there?
That was the winds.
You're talking about the winds?
Our wind investment.
And that's just, that's totally separate from this?
Yes, yes.
All right, we haven't got...
That's just investing in building those wind towers over in Green County or wherever they were supposed to be.
And what did we invest in that?
Boone County.
Ten thousand?
Yeah, ten, ten or twelve thousand.
Oh, there's some dollars in that dues and assessments from the Iowa Utilities Board too, guys, I forgot that. In fact, they're a bigger share of it than, our MMTD, MMTG dues are about a hundred and eighty-five dollars a quarter. Our IEMU dues are eight hundred and forty-four dollars. And then the rest, the balance of that would be assessments from the Iowa Utilities Board. And we don't have any choice about those either.
So we've got ten thousand dollars in, in a wind, in wind farm somewhere?
Yeah.
No, in a wind power state.
Yeah, in a state, not the farm, we have it in an idea.
Yeah. In an idea!
And that's the ten thousand we were trying to get back?
Yeah. Yes, and I, my, we have a IEMU, IEM wind annual meeting on February fifth in Ankeny, which I will be attending. And we haven't had a meeting since we had last year's annual meeting, so... The idea was to divest ourselves of that, and apparently the Board of Directors hasn't done anything about it since the last annual meeting, so it could get a little interesting this meeting.
What's the wind investment two hundred?
That's mileage if I go to that meeting. But I know I'm going to that meeting, so... That was, and I didn't, I could've changed that number because that was, I kinda left that number alone, but I used to have a whole lot more of those meetings, and they're not now, so...
And that's not something where you could connect conference call style, I know sometimes you have.
Most of the time I try to do that. This one I will go to Ankeny for, because I have to be in Ankeny for Ted's doctor's appointment that day. His doctor's appointment's at eleven o'clock and the IEM wind meeting's at twelve thirty, so I can't be on the phone. He's gonna have to go kill his little time while I go to a meeting. So you probably won't get billed mileage for that one either. Okay? The only real addition to this, I did leave in twenty-five thousand dollars for maintenance and repairs, and that's more than we've typically spent, but Alan Bonderman is back on the job and I think will begin his work to develop our plan to redo our system. It's one of the things Jerry talked about with Jane and Verdi and I this morning, is that we do need to spend some money. We need to start investing in updating our electrical system and investing maybe a little heavier than the twenty-five thousand that's in this budget. But, for the purpose of this budget, I think this is fine for tonight, because we don't have the plan yet, we haven't gone, we're gonna have to go for bids and all that good stuff once we get the plan, so... It's a ways down the road yet before we get there. The other number that's maybe a newer number, oh, the energy efficiency. I backed this number way down. We've typically budgeted two thousand dollars a year for energy efficiency. We don't have residents taking advantage of our energy efficiency programs. I'm a little concerned by that because we have that mandate from the state to reduce, you know, that we have to do this every biannual report. I'm a little concerned about that, that maybe we shouldn't put some money into promoting those programs, but I guess for the purpose of now, we'll kinda let it ride a while unless you guys have, think differently.
As long as you don't get dinged for that.
Penalized, yeah.
We did so good in the last two years that I'm, maybe if we could let down a little, but I think we're gonna have to go back to spending that money, and we may have to spend that money on advertising.
All I wanna think we need to do is abandon the CFL and switch to LED. I think you'll see more residents probably take advantage of...
If I could give away all of these...
I, I know, but I think, I mean, they're...
I agree, I agree.
All you see on TVs, LED, LED, LEDs, and now CFL's kinda been...
And maybe that's what we need to do, maybe next fall, maybe we do a promotion where we buy an LED for every home and then, you know, maybe we do something like that and spend some energy efficiency dollars, but that, that, that's a concern in our electric budget, is those energy efficiency dollars, and making sure we stay up with that. The other addition to this budget is that O and M contract at six thousand dollars. And the worst news is, I'm projecting a loss. Any other questions in electric?
And generally, you're projecting a loss because even though most of these categories are down, our sales will be down?
Yes and no, that's a part of it. The other thing is, all the cost shifting that we have been doing over the past five years into the electric fund, and the cost of things, it just kinda goes up. And if anything, we lowered our rates when we redid our rate structure. And...
Well, we got rid of that block?
Yeah. When we, when we got rid of our blocks, we in effect, just, not, not much, but we sure didn't increase them any.
Right.
And so...
I thought the whole concept was we, you didn't increase them, you didn't decrease them.
Leveling the planning.
We, we leveled it, and we leveled it, and it's been very level. And without increasing sales, we don't have increasing revenues. And any savings, you need to understand this, any savings we get from our Heartland bills being lowered is directly passed on to the customer. That is directly passed on to the customer, so there is no dollars in our, in our budget, no funds in our budget to pay for that six thousand dollar O and M contract. Or the rising cost of anything else.
And the streetlights cost, the forty-two hundred dollars is, is maintenance on the streetlights, or...
What I take is three hundred and fifty dollars from every electric bill and put it into streetlights, because our electric fund pays for the streetlights, okay? And that's a calculation that IEMU gave me when we put the LEDs in. I, and we used to take the same three hundred and fifty dollars out of the road use tax fund. But when we switched to the LED streetlights, I stopped taking that out of the road use tax fund. And just took it out of the electrical fund. You know, technically, I should take whatever the city's bill was for services and put a line item in for city use. And take that off of the actual cost of our electricity, but then it skews the actual cost of what we're paying for wholesale electricity. So, you know, but, yeah. That forty-two hundred dollars is just a subtraction from the wholesale cost.
Okay, garbage.
Garbage! It's a wash! That's my projection for next year. It doesn't make money, it doesn't lose money. Which is really all we need. I mean, we're not paying for garbage trucks, we're not buying equipment, we're not anything, we just need to cover our costs for having it picked up.
Ted, Jane, pardon on the sack board. Straight to Carol, I could get better.
She's working on it. And here is how it all wraps up. Total projected revenues of five hundred and seventeen thousand seven hundred and eighty-four dollars. Expenses, or expenses total, five hundred and ninety-two dollars eight hundred and eighty-five, or five hundred and ninety-two thousand eight eighty-five. With a deficit of seventy-five thousand one hundred and one dollars.
And our, it's fair to say that our single, and I mean this with no, there's nothing more intended than the statement itself, our single most, uh, our highest expense is wages. Generally. Definitely to the general fund, the electrical fund.
It depends how you wanna look at it, if you're gonna look at total wages in the total budget, then you can probably say that.
Wages are always high in everything there is.
But...
It's always at the top.
I hear you say if it's anywhere near, if it's anywhere under fifty percent, you're probably doing okay. And we're at twenty? My concern with this is when you look at this totals page, first of all, the expense budget is under six hundred thousand, and that's the first time it's been under six hundred thousand in a long time, okay? So our budget, expense budget is lower, we have pared some things back. My problem with this budget is, other than the sewer and the garbage fund, everything's in the negative. When we get done, at the end of the budget, everything lost money. I don't think that's a great way to run a city.
No, but these are based on your projections, these are based on reasonable insertions into the budget.
And this one, Jane's gonna cringe, 'cause she sees all the columns. But this one is a fund balance, this is an actual cash projection. Which means the first page you're looking at is the water fund. And if you look at the bottom, very bottom line, the fund balance at the end of the year, at fiscal year two thousand and ten, was a negative twenty-eight thousand. Eleven is fourteen, twelve is thirty-two, we came out of the hole in thirteen. I'm estimating we'll still be out of the hole at the end of fifteen, that's the blue column, okay? And with the budget numbers plugged in, cash balance, we'll still have fifteen hundred dollars cash at the end of the sixteen budget. With all the projections in there, okay?
Mostly due to that loan repayment. Basically, is, is the purpose of...
That would be a higher part of the higher expense, okay? Yeah, we still have that responsibility. What I, what I want you to note from this is, if we were to have anything major go on in our water system that we had to repair, or replace, or rebuild, or, or make better, we have no fund balance, we have no cash reserves to do that with. Okay?
Which has been the kind of environment we've...
In the water fund, we have been fighting that for as long as I've been here, right? Okay? So then if you turn to the sewer fund, you will see that the same has been, it's been worse in the sewer fund over the years, we've been paying off that debt.
And that debt was from when they built those ligands?
Yes, from the late nineteen seventies, it was forty years worth, okay? So, I mean, it's really a milestone to have forty years' worth of debt paid off. But councils, councils historically have not been willing to charge rates, and you guys have been hawks on watching expenses, but you have not been willing to charge rates to build fund balances. Okay, so...
But we did raise the rates in water and sewer last year, didn't we?
But not enough to build fund balances, okay?
I just wanted to give the council credit for raising rates.
And I come, I hate it, because I come in here and say, "You guys, you're not charging enough money." You guys, as elected officials, have the responsibility to do the best you can do with, with everything, okay? So, there's, I'm making no criticism, I'm making you aware of where you're at, okay? That, that's all, my only comment is to make sure you know where we're at. You wanna turn to the electric fund, look at the bottom, all the rest of the numbers on this page don't matter really, except for that fund balance at the bottom. And you can see that at the end of fourteen, the end of June, our fund balance took a giant hit, seventy-five thousand five hundred dollars, but that was, that was water meters and that was overhead primary work. And that was paying for... And that was paying for cost of a power supply. And a little number I jotted down to myself over the years to renegotiate that power supply contract, we spent $22,269.40. Yeah.
The part of that is getting paid back, correct?
No.
I mean, with the addition of the concrete plant, he's paying some of that money back, right?
Not the, not the power supply development.
No, no, not that.
The, the, the overhead primary work that we did, yes.
The $75,000 deficit.
Yes, we should, but he isn't using enough electricity to ever pay that back. Like, ah! But we had to do it, it's, it's just the way it is, okay?
Right, I mean, we didn't have an option there.
Yeah. And that overhead primary, that had to be done. And we know that we have ongoing work to do. But when you look at the, the budget, the ending fund balance, at the end of next budget year, that's assuming we did $25,000 of that work. We've, we've taken $100,000 fund balance hit in three years.
But we've done a lot of work, we renegotiated-
But we haven't restored that fund balance, that's the problem. Getting the work done's great, but restoring that fund balance or keeping that reserve balance.
You're saying the $75,000 proposed actual cash at the end of 16?
Actually, proposed actual cash at the end of 16 is $149,145.80. Okay?
And 75 is the negative?
Yeah, that was, yeah.
That was 2014.
That's 14, not 16.
Yeah. Yeah. We had a bat, we had a year where we had a lot of expenses in 14. But what I'm saying to you is we're not doing anything to restore those fund balances. If you're okay with draining those down and having nothing left, that's good, but you don't have any fund balances in anything else either.
So what are your, what are your projections for increasing?
I haven't made any because I haven't, you guys just all look at me like I'm the wicked witch of the West. But we need to raise rates and I want you to do 3.5% in water and sewer.
3.5%?
And I haven't, I haven't put real numbers to the electric. The wicked witch, when I said, I thought we should put our O and M costs into our, into our rate.
What is your projection with electric?
I don't have one yet, in all honesty.
Well, fortunately, because so many years of neglect to the, all the, majority to all the systems that now we have to play catch up.
You're right.
I mean, that's the only reason that we have a $255,000 surplus in 2013 was because they didn't do any maintenance to it. So that's what, and now we got to play catch up on all that.
We were, basically, those years we were spending doing upgrades and work on the water plant. And the water plant was in such a deficit that we, we couldn't do anything else. Now, the other note, the other thing I want you to note on this electric fund is you can see the, the monies that we have loaned to the water fund, the $37,000 in fiscal year 14. Right under that, it says transfer to general fund. That number is the number of the profits that went to the general fund to subsidize the general fund. Fiscal year 10 was almost $55,000. Fiscal year 11 was 47. We didn't do any in 12. 13 was 15 and we haven't done another dime since fiscal 13. And we just approved a, a, or have discussed, not approved, isn't the right word, we've just discussed a general fund budget that's $50,000 in the deficit. And we're still not going to crawl out of the fund balance hole with the garbage fund either, but it'll be closer.
What was our water increase last year?
We changed the base.
Yeah, we just changed the base of dollars and all the garbage. We changed the base from 18 to 20. And we did, the sewer went from 11 to 12. We didn't charge the per gallon. And I, this year, what I'm recommending in the water and the sewer is to not change the base because that base affects all the little old ladies. If you charge the usage, it affects the big users. The million plus gallons that the, the concrete plant used will pay 3.5% more for. His base, that extra dollar, he'll never notice. But some of our little old ladies will notice that extra dollar. And did I get my hind end chewed over garbage rate? Even though they had to buy bags, I got chewed because that was too much of an increase. So anyway. Yeah. And, you know, it is what it is. You got, and, but you guys are responsible for the fiscal condition of the city. You're responsible for, like Justin said, keeping things fixed, keeping things repaired, keeping things in good order. And that, it's not just the electric lines, it's not just the water plant or the water tower, it's this building, it's the shop equipment. You know, in the shop, we need to start planning for a tractor, we need to start planning for a pickup. All those things that we just, we talk about every year, but we don't really ever do.
So the sewer fund, we raised the base rate too?
A dollar. Yeah. And again, I don't want to, I don't want to raise the base rate.
Right, I thought you said you-
Last year, last year.
You raised it a dollar.
Yeah. This year, I don't want to raise the base rate because if, the base rate includes that first thousand and those people who use less than a thousand never see the increase.
But the year before, we decreased everything, right?
Or kept it the same.
It went back, it went down after that one year. What year was that?
That was three years ago.
Is that, my God, time's gone fast.
Yeah. And I, you know, I, I fully understand your need to try to keep things as low cost as you possibly can. I mean, you have to keep them as low cost as you can, but at what expense to the future. And the council, councils before I came here spent a lot of years trying not to spend money. Or to only spend money on what they have to. We went through a period where we upgraded quite a few things and I would say in the last three or four years, we've upgraded some things and other things, we've spent a lot of time trying not to spend any money. So, what do you want to do about this budget?
What do we have to decide on tonight?
Well, you should tell me if you like this budget, if you want to make changes, because when you see it in February, it's there for your tentative approval and, and then it'll be published, so.
Nancy, did you, do you have that list of employees and salaries I go back to? I know raising rates is a necessary evil of our jobs. I, I understand that. But I also think we need to look at, not only cutting budget requests of, of the library or whomever, whatever group has submitted a request. I think it's, it runs deeper than that. We need to just at least take a look at the amount of money we're spending for salaries because it is one of the key line items, key expenses against our income. And I want to be able to, and this is not balancing it on the backs of, of the employees. I want to be able to know that we've done all we can do to cut expenses before we raise rates. Well, the employees is one more place where I don't agree we need to cut. This isn't about employees.
Nope, this, this is in my pile, so we'll just keep going, okay? This is our tools and equipment list that we brought up to date this morning, just for your FYI. This is some other information that was requested that I give you.
The payroll recap sheet is something that's required by the, the state requires it or the Fed's required, I'm not sure. I think it's probably the state requires it, but that gets published every January.
The first two columns.
I just think it's, it's information you, you all said you wanted to see and I think it's good to be able to take this time and actually see it. So we've got $96,202.69 that's, and that includes all of our payments for, for meetings. That's being charged against that budget. And I know that, that we have, you know, it's, I know it's necessary. Nancy's boards, affiliations, certifications. And I, I talked to Nancy about this because I didn't want her to think anything negative about it. I just want to be able to talk about it and make sure that we're all okay. We have the office open 20 hours a week. And Nancy works 30 hours a week, is paid for 30 hours a week. And these are her affiliations that she belongs to. And Nancy, you correct me if I'm wrong, I know you will. Do we pay you for the time to attend these as well as the mileage and the workshop cost, if any?
Some yes, some no.
Okay? Do you want to go through those for us?
Western Inter Iowa Clerks Association, yes. Iowa Public Power Association-
Yes, we pay for the time and the-
Mileage, yes. Okay? But that's where I get part of my certification hours.
Okay. And as a clerk, as a, just a clerk, you need to have, you need to be certified as a clerk and you need to have certain hours?
As a clerk. I was told when I took this job that I needed to be state certified.
Okay, so you're state certified as a city clerk.
And it requires 15 hours a year. Okay?
So that's something that the council could change if they, if we don't require your certification? A state requires it, right?
No. No, I, they're, they're moving that way, they're going to.
Yeah.
They're eventually going to, they're not there yet. But as they're, as they've started this new audit program where every city gets audited, what they're finding is so bad that that's next. Required certification. And I don't, I have seen no wisdom in why you'd want a clerk that wasn't certified, but whatever. Iowa Public Power Association is a conference call and six hours per year is probably maximum because we have a conference call about once every quarter and the longest one I've been on has been 30 minutes.
And it's always a, a conference call?
Yes. Yes.
So is that a yes for Iowa Public Power? Yeah, so good for them.
Well, I, I sit here and spend a half an hour at eight o'clock.
Okay.
Once a quarter or so. I M Wind, like I told you before, is down to one meeting a year. That's either conference call or in this case, I'll be there because I have to be in Ankeny or in that area anyway that day.
So that's mileage and time.
And normally, mileage and time. Yeah. But you guys appointed me to that board as your representative, so. Okay?
A previous council, yes.
SETD is approximately two hours a month. And Endowment Foundation includes that, those are included in the same one. And yes, you pay me mileage to go to that one. And time to go to the meetings. The extra things I do for them, you do not. And then the IMF OA is the last one, which is where I get the bulk of my hours for my training. And yes, you pay-
Mileage and time.
And sometimes hotel for that one. And again, you can take all these away, you can say, we're not paying for any of that. And you're not going to save the city enough money to-
No.
Where does Jerry go to do his? Is that online or is it?
None of it. His is crazy. He tries to get as many in, in, in the fall in Spencer. But he did have to go to Dubuque once this fall. He's got a bunch of them coming up in February and March and I think he's going to end up in Des Moines for those. Now, what Jerry does is because the city's pickup isn't quite adequate, because it doesn't have cruise control or air conditioning or, and I don't think it's, I think it's old enough, you don't trust it on the road to go that far in the winter. He take, he does take his own pickup, but the city buys his gas, so he charges no mileage. We don't pay anything but the gas that he actually uses and his time. But it's a regular payday anyway, you know, those are always during the work week.
And the gasoline would be city expensive thing, it was the city pickup anyway.
Yep. Yep, and he, I mean, technically, he should be paid mileage, but he won't turn it in and he, so, okay. Saves you guys a little money. One thing about Jerry, he's always working at not spending your money. And I think that's true for me as well, but. I think, I think it was you, Justin, one time, who questioned me on my meetings and I said to you, if you remember, I said, "The chairs aren't comfortable, the meetings aren't exciting and they don't serve beer, so I'm not going for my entertainment." Did I not say that to you? And not to be smart or anything, but.
Nancy, are some of these things, like the SETD and the foundation, typically that's volunteers that are on that group, is there a reason why Auburn pays, the city of Auburn pays that? Well, I know it's not a lot of money, it's more of the issue, again, I go back to where-
Yes, the answer to your question is yes, because at that point, there was no council member willing to go and said, "If you go, we'll pay you."
Okay, so that's, that's something the, the city council can decide if they want to continue or not, correct?
Sure.
Yeah, no, and I don't mean that, I, please, I just want to be able to talk about it. It's a decision, we have a right to make and, and I, I just want to be able to talk about it. And whether or not, you know, because I'm sure you want us to look at those things and say, yes. Yes or no. You don't want us just to look the other way or whatever. So that's, that's all I'm, bringing it up is, is certainly within our realm of responsibility. And I just wish I, I wish it didn't have to be done with animosity. As far as the. There was some talk this summer about the extra mowing and that sort of thing. Is there, do you see the same need for backup as, as we had last year?
I would say yes. And, and in addition to that, I want to point out to you that for every hour Jerry doesn't spend mowing at nineteen dollars and twenty-five cents an hour, you're paying a part-time guy to mow at eight dollars and seventy-one cents an hour. That's a savings to the city.
But that, that's all well and good as long as Jerry's busy doing something else, which I'm sure he is.
Or you're relieving him from working overtime, which would be at thirty dollars an hour. Okay? Yes. It, it, these kids aren't mowing because he's sitting in the shop twiddling his thumbs.
No, and that wasn't the accusation at all.
When it comes time to do the, the parks people, we want to think real hard about that. I, I think that costs more money than it needed to. Okay? The not, the, the cleaning of the park in between wrestles.
Oh.
We restructured that last year and gave them a forty month, dollar a month fee, like a base rate plus so much and so many hours or whatever. And they didn't spend the time. I will, and not to, I don't want to disparage, disparage any one person. It just cost us more than it needed to.
And that's what we need to know. That's good information.
Do we have a.
Do they still clean the fire station now that?
Well, they, in name do, Justin, but we have some questions about that and we're working on that.
That, that's, I didn't know if they were supposed to still be after senior citizens went out.
Yes.
Okay, because they never did clean our truck area, but I know.
No, they don't go out there, but.
But I know Judy cleans the.
Judy cleans the other part for us.
Meetings, I, I was just wondering why.
Basically for, you know, one job.
Yeah, and she and Judy and I have talked about it and we're working on that, but if things don't change there, I'm going to come to you with a decision for that too, okay? The other thing, and I'm not going to mention which employee, but one of the employees on this list was having financial trouble and every dime that we paid her in wages went towards her utility bill. She came in and got her paycheck, it, their paycheck and signed the back of it. So we got an account cleaned up as well. By employing this person. We got a couple others that maybe we should do that with. I thought they'd actually work.
Yeah, I'm not sure. That's a good basis for employment, but I'm glad it worked out.
Yeah. And, and you know, she, this person did that the year before as well. So, yeah, on paper it looks like a cost, but it's not as big a cost as if we'd had to try to collect it.
So what you need from us is a general. Do we like what you put together? Obviously, we can't like it because it's showing deficit numbers. And where do you want to reduce it?
Well, I mean.
Or increase it?
There, there isn't a huge amount of place to do anything, you know, if you're. I guess my recommendation is. If you don't want to pare back any one specific area, which I, you know, I, not to pick on the library, but I think that one's a little crazy. But just because of, it's the percentage of, of our budget, okay? Not for any other reason than that. The other, the other choice you have is to say, okay, go with this, but bring us back projections for utility rates. I mean.
Well, on the library, the twenty-five hundred dollar gap in the funding for their project. What I hear you saying is that if we might be able to get that out of this year.
But we haven't budgeted for it in this year. We're.
Yeah.
But yeah. I guess that, the question is.
If we can get the project.
Depending on the budget, it doesn't matter which budget you're, do you guys want to fill that gap for them? That's the question.
And I don't have a problem with the twenty-five hundred, but I am not okay with about six thousand.
Yeah, I'm not either. For the salary thing that we said we weren't going to pay. And we were pretty adamant about that. Every one of us was. I don't think we should change our mind. There's a lot of money there and the city doesn't have that to give away. And I believe a lot of cities do not do what we do. I could go around and check and see what all cities give to their.
Library?
Yeah. And other, and other entities.
The, the problem with, with that is every city's different. Our supervisors support our library far better than in a lot of counties. So they already have more money there to spend than some libraries. Some cities have larger tax bases. You know, just same size cities have more commercial property and larger tax bases, so they have more property tax revenue to spend. Okay? So it, it's, it's really hard to, and we do this on ClerkNet all the time. What's your library budget? Well, there's so many other things that go into building that library budget. You know, is a library important in this community? You bet it is. But, and I, please don't hear me say anything bad about them. I, I, I'm not. But when the library budget, the projected budget for the library is higher than your police and fire combined.
But Nancy, you're adding in that sixteen thousand. That does not come from city coffers. And, and that projects it at thirty-two thousand dollars. Now, that is what they will spend on books and supplies and speakers and all of that. You know, I, I think that so skews it, you know, it's, it's not coming out of our tax dollars earmarked for the city. That six, that extra sixteen thousand dollars.
Okay, but neither is all of the fire budget.
So I agree. I, I wouldn't have set it up that way. I wouldn't.
From a budget perspective, for the size of your community, you need to look at it as a number on the whole.
Okay.
Okay?
Here's, here's the other, I think Auburn is probably somewhat unique in that the library has really become the community center. It already is. The extra ten hours, she's shown tremendous numbers in the people who, additional people who use the, the library. I, I look at the six thousand dollars for the extra ten hours that she has the library open, which virtually extends the service in many ways from the city clerk's office to the library. Whether it be the, the dump key or the whatever, the bags or whatever needs to be done. But that, I'm not here to sell it. What I am here to say is that when you, when you have, let's talk half, forty-five hundred dollars to move a broken down gazebo and submit it as a grant, and, and then at least half of it is city tax money to move a gazebo, but we're not. I would take that money and put it at the extra hours at the library where you're really providing a service. You know, that's what's hard for me is the trade-off there doesn't, doesn't compute. And I, I really feel strongly that the library is one of Auburn's strongest assets. And certainly worth the money. And their fundraising as best they can, it's, it's a tough business fundraising. And no, we didn't make any commitment to, to fund them again for the extra ten hours. Their commitment was that they would do fundraising. And they did do fundraising and they did, they did get increased numbers of people using the library. So I feel strongly about the ten hours, the extra ten hours.
I do think they justified the ten hours and I do agree, moving a gazebo for forty-five hundred versus six thousand towards the library is a no-brainer for me.
Well, I think if Nancy and Jerry's wages are going to be on the line, then I think, I don't think we need to be putting the six thousand dollars into the library. Because our city employees deserve just as much as a librarian, if not more, because we count on them on a daily basis. And that's fine not to do the gazebo, but I think the money needs to go to our city employees. Not all to the library.
So the city employees need an additional forty-five hundred dollars?
Saying they need an additional forty-five hundred dollars, but I don't think they need to be stuff taken away from them. And I think they deserve a raise this year.
Okay, that's, that's a fair statement. Taken away is a fair statement. You didn't talk about that.
I said it's discussed. Her meetings were all discussed, so I mean, if that's something that we're going to talk about taking away from her.
Discussion is, is our obligation.
Yeah, it is. I just don't think we can keep giving away so much money to all these entities and it just keeps increasing every year. I really don't think that's fair to, to the city. I know they try to do fundraising, but I know there's other towns that do a lot more than what we do for fundraising. I don't know what else to do. I don't know.
And you have other entities in town, you know, the rec committee, they don't ask for a whole lot. The car show committee, basically you chose not to help them. We helped them tremendously. We gave, we paid, we bailed them out.
But that doesn't even come close to six thousand dollars.
And then when we ask for repayment, because they did a good job of fundraising, they get upset, which I don't understand.
That's, really can't even compare that small amount of dollar to six thousand dollars.
You can't when you. Report it one day versus all year.
Right.
That, that's a one-day event versus an all-year-round source of entertainment.
And, and, you know, I, to say we didn't help the car show committee is, is not an accurate statement, you know. Nancy and Jerry both spent time up there, invested time. I, I just, we literally bailed them out. I can't say it strong enough. We, we have never done that for any other group.
Well, you don't think paying wages is bailing out the library?
No, I.
Providing a city service.
Expanding services. Bailing, bailing out the library? No, I, I don't see the, the library in that situation at all. They want to expand their services and it's, they've proven that they're utilized. And that, that's just my opinion that that's where we should, we should allow them that. And pull back on the, on the twenty-five hundred gap money, put their fundraising to that. They're going to have a nice new facility. They're matching, they're taking all of their foundation money to match for that, to improve the community building. It was the second largest grant awarded from the foundation itself.
I'm aware of all of it. You don't have to recap it all for me. Well, I'm aware of what they've done.
Okay.
I don't know, just take that, that one out of there and that, there for the gazebo and move it.
Take that out.
Yeah, because it's not going to, you're not going to argue about it.
Yep.
You know, it's going to be, no matter what, it's just going to be the way it is. We don't have much say. About the six thousand. Regardless. I don't believe we should do it, but it's just, we must would just get it, forget about it and quit arguing about it because it's going to go. We already know which way it's going to go. It's just wasting our time.
Okay, what else do you need, Nancy?
Yeah.
No, wait a minute. No, let us keep moving.
It's just, let's just keep moving. It's not, it's not going to.
No, no, I guess I don't know.
Really change, it's, it's going to be three against two. I'm not for the six thousand and we know how it's going to go. Okay? So let's not waste any more time. We were all adamant before. We all sat here and said the six thousand dollars was not going to fly the second year because we didn't have that money. And all of a sudden we're going, it's going to fly this year. So let's just go ahead and do it.
I, I would rather have a clear decision. I mean, I, a vote has not been taken.
Well, we already know how it's going to go.
Randy hasn't said a word.
I know, but I know how it's going to go.
Please. Go around the table and, and say how you're going to do it. What do you want? Are you going to say yes or no? And then it ends it.
Okay, now, now to the six thousand.
Yes to the ten hours, the six thousand for the ten hours, and I would like the gazebo budget item.
We already agreed on it.
I already crossed that one out.
Okay.
Is there any way we can adjust this six thousand?
Well, that's what I was wondering. Why can't we do the forty-five hundred to all the board that they got to make up?
We don't have to go to the total.
There you go.
We can adjust with it.
There, what you take.
They can make up the other fifteen hundred dollars from the board.
There you go.
Because we're getting the gazebo.
Might as well.
No, we saved with it. There is still a lot of, oh, you mean from the gazebo?
Take that forty-five hundred, put it in that spot and then tell them.
Knock it down, we won't go with six.
If you guys want that ten hours, you guys are going to have to make up the other fifteen hundred dollars.
I mean, that's fair.
I mean, what's?
That's not, nobody.
Since we're taking out the gazebo.
I think.
But the only thing is with the gazebo, we tried to get rid of the gazebo, so maybe they would be a little more apt to sell that property for ten. That was the only reason we thought of getting it.
And I think that we can do something.
Gazebo down.
Exactly. I think that's probably our best bet. I mean, just.
In the long run.
And that's really honestly no expense.
No. Forty-five hundred over to the library for the extended hours. Let's keep it like that.
And if they have to adjust it to eight to accommodate that forty-five hundred or seven, whatever it takes to do that, that's what it takes.
Okay.
I'm going to get there all the way around that way, but.
I think it's a good suggestion.
For review and agreement with that?
Good job.
Well, we all agree. Last year with the fire department budget, it's kind of a nitpicky thing, but you guys gave them a six thousand dollar budget plus six hundred, which you wanted prior approval before they spent it. Do you want to leave it that way or do you want to just give them their sixty-six hundred this year?
I'm not saying because the other two that can vote are going to go exactly opposite, so I am not saying.
I'm thinking we've covered our own busting everything out of our own pocket. We didn't ask to send you for nothing, so they should know that you planned that last year. You want my hand here?
I'm just asking. And kudos to the fire department for coming in and asking for nothing more than they asked the year before.
Well, that's what I was going to say. It's the same as last year, so to me that's fine.
I mean, out of our pocket, honestly, this year we probably spent well over fifteen thousand dollars.
So give them just the sixty-six.
Or more.
Sixty-six hundred.
Okay. All right. Okay, any other general fun things you want to discuss? The rest of it's pretty cut and dried, kind of the way it is. What do you want to look at for, I guess what I'm going to bring to you. What do you want to look at for, I guess what I'm going to bring to you at the February meeting is my recommendations for utility cost increases. Is that where you want to go?
Yep.
Look at it, discuss it?
Give us a couple of options.
Yeah.
I will try to do, yes. I will, I will try to do as much as I can to go, move around it in several ways so that you have. I guess my question, my question moves to. We need to think about, and I don't know the answer to this, but we need to think about what are comfortable fund balances? What's our goal? Not that we're going to get there in the first year, but what's our goal in each utility fund to have as a fund balance?
Can you do some research, Nancy? Because. None of us are financial officers. I, you know, would you do some research with utility funds and in small cities and see what?
It's going to run the gamut. What I've been told is that the fund balance. Reserve amount that you should shoot for is six months' worth of expenses. So if a tornado came through here and we couldn't sell any electricity for six months, we could still pay the bills.
I was going to say fifty percent of annual budget.
Yeah. And we're not there.
Would be safe. I mean, would it be a safe place?
At least a place to start.
That's a huge goal, but it's, I would certainly think it would be a safe place.
So.
And I'm thinking. Like to progress towards that, not in the next three years, but maybe five to eight years achieve that goal. Because a progressive thing is going to be a heck of a lot easier on our citizens than if we take three huge jumps every other year. It's going to, I mean, we already have people that complain about their rates now and people that supposedly are moving out of town according to realtors because our rates are too high in town.
I know.
So.
Okay. I'm going to take it that direction.
That's really a hard decision.
And just, you can look at the numbers and, and say yes or no. I mean.
Just give us a couple of options, even in the steps.
But use. I mean, just looking here at the. I guess if we average it out, it should be. Pretty mediocre, but we're doing fifty thousand dollar jumps in three years in our expenditures. So, you know, I mean, it's.
You've got to, you've got to take, you've got to find a number to plug in for increased expenses every year. You've got to find a number to plug in for increased or decreased revenues and you've got to, it, it'll be pretty subjective, but if I take this, this one with all the numbers on it and extend it out five to eight years with some projections. You can kind of see where we have to be to get to where you want to be.
I truly think just looking, I mean, just looking at this water one. You know, we're looking at total expenditures most years from anywhere from sixty to seventy-four thousand dollars.
Yep.
I mean, if we're sitting at thirty thousand dollars as a fund balance, we should be pretty safe. I would think.
I would go forty, but because at the end of five years, it's going to be an eighty thousand dollar budget rather than seventy.
Probably, yeah.
Yeah. But yeah, I get what you're saying and I think that makes some sense.
Sewer probably around the fifteen to twenty thousand dollar mark and electrical. Electrical, I think we should probably do a little more because there's a heck of a lot more hazards that we could have in electrical than, than water or sewer. And if we have a line of poles that decided to fall on ground, they're insured, but it's still going to be an expense.
But those are ultimate goals.
You know, it'd be great to get back up to the twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen levels where basically you're covering a year's worth of expenses if. Excuse my French, shit hit, shit hit the fan.
Right.
It's, and garbage, I.
We don't.
Just want zero.
Yeah.
But that's my personal opinion on it.
Does garbage use increases, they drop the bags?
I have no idea. I'm, I don't drive around. I have no idea.
I was just curious if there's more people using the garbage.
I wish they'd come and buy more bags because we don't have very many of the yellow ones left, but we have a ton of the green ones.
Those are the smaller ones.
Yeah.
Needless to say, those are all being used in-house now. We're no longer buying any other garbage bags around here.
So Nancy, do you have enough to do what you need to do?
I think I do, if you don't have anything else for me.
I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Jay, second by Randy, by Durham. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.